With that being said, then I'm going to go ahead and welcome all of our class of 2021 participants to our virtual town hall this morning. I just wanted to begin by saying thank you very much for joining us for this session. We have a lot of information prepared for you. But before we get into all of the content that the adults and students have put into this presentation, I did want to acknowledge that I think it's important that we're here together this morning. We are very much in a unique time, and I think that is a broad understatement. But coming together in a way like this is a little reminder that some things at school are still happening. Although classrooms are not necessarily meeting in the same way, and we don't have sporting events as we did before, there are gears that are still turning in the school system and at our school. And so I think it is really important that we recognize that we're here together, talking about what is happening for the junior class at BCC and information so that we can all move forward together. So thanks very much for being here. If I could have the next slide. So we have some individuals joining us today to help with this presentation. Of course, I'm Mr. Nelson. I'm your administrator. We have Ms. Parmally, our college and career coordinator. She is here to talk about a lot of information important to you in the college process. Ms. Lloyd, your class sponsor for the class of 2021 is here. And of course, we have some class officers. I just want to say to the class officers, when we asked you all, would you like to join this presentation and give a message to represent your class? You stepped right up. I appreciate that. Thank you for being here. I think it is important that students participate in our presentation today. So thank you very much. Next slide. So here are some of the topics that we're going to move through. Before we actually get into those, I want to just touch on a couple of points of framing that are important to get out of the way. Everyone that is on our Zoom right now, I do want to be upfront in saying that our presentation is going to be recorded. I just want you to be aware of that. Not everyone can attend when we have this scheduled, so it is important that we record this, so individuals can take a look at this content outside of this 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM window. Our presentation today is very content heavy. I recognize that that is sometimes hard to sit here for an hour and to consume a lot of content, so please feel free to self-break. Have a sip of water, step away and listen, you can turn your camera off, whatever it is that you are most comfortable. We are going to go through a lot of details. Please don't also feel that you have to remember every single thing that is said. The presentation will be available to you. You can go back to that and break it down into parts. But just to be upfront, we're going to go through a lot of, a lot of content today. We are structured in three essential parts. There's some admin updates for me first and foremost, then Ms. Parmally is going to take it from there, and she's going to go over some college and career updates, some information about the college process. Then Ms. Lloyd and the officers are going to give some information directly to the juniors. I'm going to touch on some things from counseling, and we're going to wrap up. But there are really three big chunks to our presentation today. We had questions that were submitted by some of the class of 2021 in advance of our presentation. We have incorporated what we can answer in this presentation, and you will see that marked by a double asterisk. So if you see that in the presentation, that's what that means. A student submitted that question, and we're responding to it. If we can't get to it in the presentation, we'll follow up and send you an email directly. The junior class put together all of the links. So this presentation has many embedded links, and they have pulled those links from today's presentation and put them into one document that you can access over time. It is available to you already in the junior class Google classroom. So if you need any of that information, reach out to Ms. Lloyd, just the code. But if you know where that classroom is, those links are already compiled for you in different categories. So you have a one-stop shop, so to speak, about where to get to that content. And finally, last but not least, we're going to move quickly and steadily through all of our content. You may have questions along the way. I don't know if we have an active chat, but any of those questions that you want to come back to, you can continue to submit through the Google form that we sent you. We can go back and continue to address those questions as we go. Again, please take a look at today's topics just really quickly. We're doing grading and reporting, touching on technology. You have belongings in the building, so we got to tell you what to do about that. Obligations, summer learning opportunities. We still have some yearbooks left, and then we're going to hear from other speakers on our Zoom. One of the most important topics that we are going to address in today's presentation is grading and reporting. So Montgomery County Public Schools has put out a lot of information to the community, but very importantly to you as students, about what fourth quarter grading is going to look like for all of us. I want to begin with something that is very important to say to you directly, and that is that students are still expected to attend and engage in their distance learning opportunities through the remainder of the school year. The last day of school this year is June 15th. It is critical that you are checking in Google Classroom through MyMCPS Classroom and making sure that you participate and complete the work that has been prepared for you by your teachers. That is very important to underscore. Marking period grades for quarter four are going to fall into one of two categories. Students are either going to earn a pass or an incomplete for quarter four. That grading information, additional details, some foundational explanation about where the pass incomplete comes from, is all maintained on the MCPS website. You'll see that link embedded there. I do really encourage you, if you have not taken a look at it, to check it out. I also would like to say, go back to it over time. It has been upgraded, so it is not just a stagnant thing that is out there. It is important to come back to that because that's the guidance we are receiving about how to prepare your fourth quarter grades. MCPS still needs to advise students how to notify the school about whether you want to receive the pass or the letter grade option. So in quarter four, you have the option to simply select a pass to remain as your grade, or you have the option to select a letter grade, which would be one letter grade higher than the grade that you earned in quarter three. We do not yet have the specific details. They will be forthcoming, and we will communicate them to you, but we do not yet have the details about how to notify the school about pass or letter grade selection that you make. If you receive an incom- if you received an incomplete for quarter three, it's important that we wrap that up. An incomplete means there is still something to address. There is still work to be done. So you have until May 29th now in order to resolve your incomplete, but after May 29th, incompletes will convert to an E. So please be sure that you are in contact with your quarter three teacher in regards to your incomplete to avoid that grade of E. Next slide. MCPS has communicated four criteria that guides how teachers will determine if a student has earned pass for quarter four. In order to earn a pass, you must meet at least two of those four measures. Let me repeat that. To earn a pass, students must meet, according to a teacher's interpretation, two of the four measures to earn a pass for quarter four. Those four criteria are assignment completion, your demonstration of mastery according to content and skills that are taught and assessed, your engagement with Zooms, communicating with your teacher, completing those assignments and submitting them, and your teacher's overall professional judgment, the entire body of work taken into consideration as demonstrated by the student. If you meet any two of those criteria, you will earn a pass. So MCPS has communicated this chart to us so that we can take a look at marking period three grades, marking period four grades, and eventually determine what will be a final grade for students. One thing I want to begin by saying in regards to this chart is it has been upgraded once. So as the school system considers input, what they're taking a look at, what they're hearing from schools, students, and families, this has already changed once. Please pay attention to this. But what this will show you is if your marking period three grade is such, and you earn a pass score for marking period four, what is your final grade option? Let me break one of these down for you. So in marking period three, if you earned a grade of C and you earn a pass by meeting two of those criteria that I just went over in the prior slide, you have one of two options available to you then as your final grade, and that is either one letter grade higher, which would be a grade of B, or you can simply select pass. So please take a look at this chart, look at it to know and understand what it means. But one thing that I want to say is you are, it is important that we avoid earning a complete and incomplete in marking period four. So please do not just assume that because you had a higher grade in marking period three, that there isn't something to do in marking period four. There is. You want to put yourself in a position to advocate or select what is the best option for me. So please do not just bow out of this, earn an incomplete because you think things will resolve and be okay. We need you to stay engaged and put yourself in a position to select what is the grade that is best represents for you, your final grade in the course. Next slide. Technology, we need it right now in order to make sure that you are engaged with learning at school. If you are someone who needs a Chromebook, if you are someone who is experiencing a technology issue, your stuff just isn't working at home, if your internet is not really holding up, you can come by BCC, and we will work with you in regards to technology. We are available each Tuesday at the school. One of the administrators is available from 9:00 to 3:00 PM. You come to the main office door, one person at a time into the lobby, and we have Chromebooks and MiFi devices, instructions and things for you if you need any of that. You also have a technology support number, so 240-740-7022. You can call, they will call you back, and there are technical support assistants that are going to help you rectify whatever technology issues you are having at home. Next slide. So you have some things in the building, some personal items that are yours. We want to recognize that you have those items. We know they are there, and we are working on the plan for you to get them. Please be assured you will have the opportunity to get things. BCC is already putting together a plan for seniors to work on this. It will be an incremental process. So what I want you to know about that is we are putting individuals in priority based upon need, and then we are working step by step through the plan. The reason that we cannot just say, come by to school next week, is because we need to keep everyone safe. So when the juniors' details are available, we will then send those to you, and we ask that you please pay attention to those details and come to the school when we ask you to come to the school, because again, safety is our priority, and you need to work with that process because we have really looked at it for that reason. Next slide. So obligations and returning materials. Of course, you might have some textbooks or things that belong to the school from the media center. We do need to get those back. That's going to come in a similar like process in which you pick up your materials. You can also bring those things back. But what I want to ask all of you to do is think about, what are the things that I do have that belong to the school? Because we do in fact need all of those materials back. They do cost money. Other students need them in the future, so please be thinking, I've got to get those materials back to the school. You may also have an obligation. So you owe some money to the school for something that you either purchased, or maybe it's something that you lost. You can still pay obligations to the school by using that link. It is just something to pay attention to because at some point in time, we've got to get those resolved. So you can use that link in order to see if there's something that you need to take care of now. Next slide. Summer learning opportunities. So a week ago, when we were designing this presentation, we did not have a lot of information when it came to this. And then low and behold, over the weekend, a lot of information came to us. That is a good note for us to remember because information is really rolling out. So MCPS will be holding summer school. There are three formats. Face-to-face sessions, five hours per day. This is really for students that want to retake in order to earn a better grade. There is a detail on the MCPS website. They are still examining about what parts can be face-to-face, whether it's all online. So in seeking that face-to-face session, please remember we need to pay attention to what details are then forthcoming about how we actually do that. There are summer online pathways to graduation, so that is where individuals that want to earn that final credit to graduate, you're going to have an evening experience with evening check-ins from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. There's a blended learning opportunity, which is some check-ins, but a lot of self-guided activities that students are responsible on their own time for taking on. So please go to the MCPS website, search summer school, see what details are there. Registration information is not yet out. So that is going to be something to pay attention to as summer school is for you. I imagine it will fill up extremely quickly this year. Extremely quickly. So please make sure you pay attention and look at that website often. BCC is also planning some online experiences that we generally would offer face-to-face. I want to say that we are not offering face-to-face experiences in which you are coming to the school this summer, but experiences like women's leadership opportunity, the college essay writing opportunities. We are still planning on doing those as local programs that we sponsor, in which our teachers will be preparing an online experience for you. Also, please be advised, some of the academic departments are planning summer assignments for students to complete. Again, not all, but some that have historically done summer learning opportunities are planning on pushing those out to students that are preparing to take their next course. So keep your eyes open for those. Next slide. A note on yearbooks. We have extended, if you want to buy a yearbook, to June 1st. In order to do so, there were 100 copies. That was about two weeks ago, so I'm sure those are still going. Please use the web, or excuse me, the address, the link in this presentation to order your yearbook if you wish to do so. There's a code in order to get in there. If you need any financial support in getting a yearbook, you simply reach out to your administrator, and we will help you with that process. Next slide. So there are the admin updates. What I want to do now is pass it to Ms. Parmally. She's going to take you through a lot about the college and college process to make you aware of.
Hi juniors, it's Mrs. Parmally. I think it's still morning. Good morning. Thank you for joining us today. I hope you and your families are well and doing well. I've received a lot of questions and some concerns about the college process for your year, the class of 2021. So I have a lot of information to share with you, so I guess I want to say buckle up. I'm going to start with some givens. You know, it is a given that you have unique and desirable academic accomplishments, interests, and talents. You did before the pandemic, you do during the pandemic, and you will continue to. Next slide. It is also true that college admission officers are incredibly understanding, compassionate. They care about building a community, and they care about your well-being. They are working really hard creatively and generously to connect with students. They remind us, I think it's kind of cute, that they work for the Office of Admissions, not the Office of Denials. Next slide. And the third thing is that you will be supported in your college selection and application process. You are not behind. You might have missed college visits, but BCC has always started to focus on juniors during semester too. You were fortunate, the BCC counselors did visit your classrooms before we left school. We will have college readiness workshops. MCPS is even planning some things at that level for summer programming, and college online support is abundant. Next slide. I like this quote. While your college search might not look like those that have come before you these past few years, colleges are still excited to engage with you. So we will have a few less grays that split hairs over. Definitely more students will be applying without standardized testing. Neither is a bad thing. This will allow us to dig deeper into your interests, your personality, and your motivations. I think it's important to remember this. Next slide. So how can you stay informed? I really invite you to visit the College and Career website. This was a heavy lift for me. I created a website. I did not want to send you five or six emails every day. I was hoping to train you to visit the College and Career website and let me do the work to sort through things and to condense things and to summarize things for you. For example, I recently added what you see now. Tomorrow, the Coalition is having a 100 college event. There are like five or six divisions during the day. You can choose colleges to enter work rooms to talk with college reps. It's pretty amazing. So you can link to that from, from this presentation. Now, as soon as I finish with this presentation, I'm going to go into that website and add something that I set up last night with a man named Ethan Sawyer, who is like an essay guru, and he is going to, it sounds like, offer us some free college essay workshop. So please, message redundant over and over, please visit the College and Career website. I wrote you all a letter, and I sent it out through Navian's email, Junior Things to Do Letter from Mrs. Parmally. You should have received it in your email. It's also posted on the College and Career website. I send this letter to juniors at this time every year. It's not different for you. There's will be virtual things for you instead of in-person things, but it's a checklist of things that you can have on your radar, things that you can check off to chip away at in this college process over the summer. And then a final caution, I want you to remember to use primary sources. You do that in English, you do this in history. Things are changing, as Mr. Nelson said, so fast that you have to go to the primary source. Go to the college website to see what their policy on something is. Go to the college board, go to ACT. I woke up yesterday morning, first thing I did, I went on the ACT website because they were supposed to say whether or not they were going to have their June test. Well, they hadn't said yet, so we have to keep checking to see about those things. Next slide, please. There are college visits concerns. How can I visit colleges? How can, since I can't visit colleges, how can I find my people? How can I find my place? Next slide. So, you know, it is sad that you cannot visit college campuses right now. So I'm going to spend five seconds being sad for you. So we're going to be sad for you. It is sad. Okay, it is sad. Next slide. But what can you do? You can visit college and university websites. Try ReedCollege, kind of as a gold standard, very engaging website. Try KenyonCollege, shows you how colleges can be creative with their websites. This particular link is to the sounds of Kenyon. Cereal falling in a bowl where they eat. Very interesting. So I'm going to, a little story here I want to tell you. I'm going to try not to tell a lot of stories, but I'm going to tell you one story. So it has to do with visiting colleges with my daughter. And I know that's kind of sad because we got to visit colleges and you aren't. We had a great time. We set foot on one lovely, well-known campus, and within two minutes, my daughter looked at me and whispered, can we leave? Okay, this is your journey. Let's leave. Could she have been happy there? Quite probably. But something did not click. That was okay. There were like 3,900 colleges for us to think about. The same thing happened to me when I was preparing this slideshow. I was looking for websites to share with you. Some of them I exited in two seconds. Why? You know, I don't know. I didn't see anything that grabbed me. Did I skip over some good colleges? I'm sure that I did, but there are lots of others. I lingered on one website because the featured article on Gecko Toes really caught my eye, and I wanted to read that article. I also lingered on the Kenyon website to hear the sounds of Kenyon. So the quote at the bottom of this slide, I think, is relevant. A school's website is going to be your window into the school's soul. So spend some time hanging out on school websites. Next slide. Sign up for mailing lists for schools that catch your interest. This is how you are going to be invited to virtual events. I'm invited to virtual events because the admission reps who know me invite me, but they don't know you unless you sign up for the mailing list for a college. Mailing lists and website visits are going to be the pandemic version of demonstrated interest. You all ask questions about demonstrated interest. If I visit the school, if I do this and that and the other. Schools know when you're on their website. They know how long you're on their website. It's kind of 1984, if you've read that. Take a virtual tour. I don't know if you've tried this yet, but there's a person who walks you through campus. Sign up to chat with a student. Every website I was on has the capability for you to sign up to chat with a student. Some it's by area of interest, some it's just generic. Try to connect with our BCC admission rep. They are not bored, but they have time now because they're not traveling and not hosting campus events. They want to talk with you. Next slide, please. And what, many schools have YouTube channels. I was trolling around the University of Chicago, and I met Mitch. Mitch has a series called Mitch Tips, and you can, he talks to you about extracurricular activities, letters of recommendation. Another suggestion is to read blogs and follow social media of campus groups that interest you. Jeff Schiffman, who's a BCC grad, and now the director of admissions at Tulane, has a really popular college blog that I've linked here that you might like to follow. Some people have said that when you are on the college websites, they're good, and you need to do that, but it's a bit of marketing. But if you get into actually reading the blogs, you get into a little bit more of the student perspective. You can ask me to connect you with the BCC student who attends a school of interest to you. Next slide. And when you're doing all this, I think like, you all have better memories than I do, but still I think you should kind of keep track of your impressions, take some notes, you know, create a spreadsheet. And I have another quote that I really like from the UChicago rep. She said, college fit actually exists in the people. You can walk around the campus and say, oh, wow, this is pretty. Most campuses are pretty, but it's the people who are going to make the experience for you. It's the students, it's professors. So from her point of view, you might be in a better position this year to connect more with people. Next slide. You're concerned about transcripts. Mr. Nelson shared how MCPS has decided to do their transcripts. So admission officers are not at all concerned about this. Even pre-pandemic, they got transcripts that were narratives. They got transcripts from a school system that used a three-point, four-point, five-point grading scale. New York uses one to 100 points, I think. So I love the quote, the idea of a variance in a transcript will send us into a tizzy is not true. Trust us, we will know how to handle this. Next slide. Remember that all students are experiencing the same transcript issues as you are. Next slide. You're doing a good job, Ms. Lloyd. The consensus of admission officers is that one semester of COVID-19 grade reporting actually amounts to a small piece of your total picture. Think about the University of Maryland. They have 26 admission review factors. So you are going to have a chance to highlight yourself well. If however, you do not think your transcript tells your story, then there is a place on the college applications for you to explain this. Next slide. There are a lot of standardized testing concerns. We'll be able to take standardized tests. Again, you have to go to the college board website, go to the ACT website. What we do not know is when and how national testing will result, and we do not know whether MCPS will offer a school day test. Next slide. What we do know for the SAT, SAT has added additional test dates, and on each of the dates, they have added additional seats. So you will not be shut out of taking the SAT when we can take it. Preferential signup is going to be given to those of you who had your June test canceled, or to those of you who want to take the SAT, you're in the class of 2021, and you have not yet taken the SAT. Next slide. For the ACT, maybe we know today whether June 13th, I didn't check. They are still taking registrations for July 18th. Interesting thing about ACT is the commenting goes that ACT is in a much better position to offer online testing, so we have to stay tuned about that, or hybrid testing, maybe some in-person, maybe some online. Another big change for ACT this year is that they're going to offer single-section retesting. You have to have taken the entire test, but if you have, then you can go back and you can retake one single section, or up to three single sections. Next slide, next test. What about standardized testing and college admissions? Again, check each school's website. Many schools have already made it very clear that they are still going to require test scores. The University of Maryland will still require test scores. Towson, UMBC, and it's a huge list. These are just three that are close to us. One thing to check is to see whether or not you have to continue to send your scores from the testing agency, from college board, or from ACT, or whether you can self-report. There has been some talk that since it costs money to send test scores, to alleviate that extra payment, that more schools will allow you to self-report your scores. What usually happens is you self-report your scores. If you are admitted to that school, then they might ask you to send them from the testing agency, and they better agree, right? University of Maryland has stated that they will be, this is their words, less rigid this year with the requirement to have test scores by November 1st. They used to be, everything has to be in on November 1st. If the test scores aren't there, we won't look at them. If the test scores aren't there, we won't look at them. I mean, they're not, they're not going to extend the window indefinitely, but they are going to be less rigid on November 1, which is good news. Next slide. Some schools are test optional. Many schools were test optional way before this happened. There's a website called fairtest.org, which, which will give you a list of all the test optional schools. Schools are jumping on board to go test optional. Some schools are going to be test optional permanently now, like St. Mary's College of Maryland had been thinking about it for a long time. This was the perfect time to make the move. Some schools are going to offer test options for you guys for next year and maybe for the next few years. California announced that they will be, the University of California School System will be definitely test optional next year, recommendation for the next five years. But within those next five years, they hope to develop their own standardized testing. Okay, next. JD's holding his head. I see you have some California schools on your list, JD. Next slide. Be careful because test optional can mean different things to different schools. You have to visit the website or ask, does the school require something else if you choose the test optional? Maybe an extra essay? Or can you be test optional if you have a certain GPA? Also, an important question is to find out if you are still eligible for merit money from that school if you do not submit your test scores. Next slide. Big question that I've gotten, well, how should I decide whether to submit my scores if it's a test optional school? What is good enough? There is widespread agreement that if your test score falls above or in the high median range, you should consider submitting your score. The University of Chicago looks at it a little bit differently. The student should ask him or herself, what enhances my candidacy at this school? Is it my scores? Then go for it. If it's not my scores, use test option, don't feel guilty, and don't regret it. Next slide. There are also schools that are test flexible. You can send whatever puts you in the best light. Your IB scores, your SAT. NYU is test flexible, Hamilton, Middlebury, and there are others. There's something new starting up, test-blind schools. Send them your scores, they'll throw them out. Loyola New Orleans just recently joined the test-blind group. Northern Illinois and Hampshire College. Next slide. What will the essay questions be this year? Well, all applications will require you to write a personal statement. I've made this a link because this is what I was telling you about earlier, that there will be a virtual essay workshop that's linked to this right here about how to write your personal statement. Both the Common App and the Coalition have already published their prompts for this year and they're linked right here. A big question early in this discussion, like back in March, was college reps saying, kids wanting to know, should I write about COVID-19? Should I not write about COVID-19? Some reps were saying, oh, we're going to get so tired of reading about COVID-19. Other reps were saying, it's the most significant thing that's happened in their lives. Maybe, of course, we're going to read about COVID-19. So the Common App got pretty smart and they added an optional opportunity. So on the Common App, you will find a dropdown menu. Would you like to say something about yourself and this experience? Yes, no? And then you'll have 250 words to talk about whatever you want related to the pandemic. Did you struggle? You know, what did you learn about yourself? What ideas did you come up to help out? Another way to apply to colleges is an institutional application. And they're going to have their own questions, like Towson. They always have their own question. No matter what way you apply to college, when you're writing your essay, all colleges agree that you're writing about you. Okay? They want it to be simple, they want it to be personal, and they want it to be about you. Next slide. That was long, sorry. What are supplemental essays and questions? This varies. Some colleges ask you no additional questions. Some colleges ask you quite a few additional questions. And they're going to be on the individual college page. And the way college admission reps talk about it is the supplemental questions often try to get at, what about that particular school is appealing to you? I'm going to use University of Chicago as an example. Their supplemental essay questions are pretty famous, like where's Waldo? Or what is X? So why does Chicago ask those questions? It's because the University of Chicago actually really values different thinkers, creative thinkers, out-of-the-box thinkers, someone who gets excited about answering a question that doesn't have just one answer. So this supplemental question allows you to show to them what they're looking for. Next slide. The most common supplemental question is why XYZ college? And you can't just write a response that you can plug into any college that you are applying to. You have to do some homework here. What is important to this college? What does this college think it stands for? What is unique about this college? Why do you want to go to that college? And what about you makes you a good fit for that college? Admission representatives talk regularly about how solid the major essays are in college applications and how quick-sounding the supplemental essays sound. Next slide. I'm going to get some water, sorry. So I want to remind you again that there is a section in the Common Application. It's called, is there anything else you would like us to know about you? College reps are surprised that students don't use that section more often. It has as many characters in it as it does, as your essay section does. They don't want another essay, really, they do not want another essay. But they're surprised that you don't use this section to tell some additional things about yourself. For example, what about your transcript? This is the place where I said, what, what if you're not happy with what MCPs decided about our grading policy? How can you talk about how you had wished to finish out the school year? This is a place to do that. Did you learn some things about yourself during this situation? Did you learn that, maybe even you learned that you are anxious about the unknown, but, but you visited some wellness sites and you learned some, some self-care techniques? And that's important when you go off to college because that's going to be a new experience too. So lose this section, use this section to tell something about you that you didn't want to write your whole essay about. Next, next slide. Without extracurriculars, how can I showcase my extra talents? Well, remember that you had pre-COVID activities. You will have something to put in the activities block. You had freshmen, sophomore, and half of junior year to be doing things. But during the pandemic, what were you doing? Hopefully you were doing something. Colleges want to know about that. I thought a cute example was when college rep said, did you fix the lawnmower when it broke? Did you figure out how the lawnmower works? That's pretty cool. Were you responsible for younger siblings? Oh my goodness, you know, herding kittens to do their Zoom classes in second grade or whatever. Did you actually have a job where there's curbside pickup of food that you were helping with that? Did you learn or practice an instrument or do Duolingo? Yale University offers us 1,800 free courses, including one on the science of wellbeing. So colleges are going to be interested in how you use this time. Next slide. So from the College and Career Center website, I added this slide, Mr. Nelson, just this morning. So here are links to summer opportunities and high school internships. What I realized last night was I hadn't checked this site. I had been getting every once in a while an update on, oh, our opportunity has gone virtual. And so I updated it. But I realized that I wasn't hearing from hardly anybody. So I went on and the fourth link that I clicked on actually said that there's a virtual update to this. So I can put some of this on you. These two sites exist. You can look into these opportunities and you can see if they're virtual. I also am going to start to go through it and highlight in pink the ones that have a virtual opportunity now. Next slide. Remember that leadership is multifaceted, you know? So you haven't been able to be the sport team captain or you didn't have the lead in the school play. But there are opportunities for leadership. Did you have some leadership in your home? Did you have some leadership in your community? What useful role did you play during this stressful time? And two words that keep coming up over and over again when college reps do webinars, two words, character and grace. They're looking for demonstrations of character in students. You know, the idea that you need empathy and resilience and grit. How did you survive and thrive? And then from their own point of view, they use the word grace. They are going to use grace when they are reading college applications, knowing what you have gone through. Next slide. So there's some concern about how our current seniors who might be deciding, oh my goodness, because of what's going on, I'm just going to do a gap year or I'm going to defer. And how is that going to affect your class, the class of 2021? The conversation right now from college representatives is that they have not yet seen a large uptick in the number of requests for deferral. Now know that every college has a position called the Vice President for Enrollment Management. And their job is to manage enrollment. They are not going to advantage the class of 2020 to the point of disadvantaging you. So not all requests will be granted and the granting of requests will be controlled to protect the class of 2021. So I think that's a worry you can take off your plate. Next slide, please. Should I consider taking a gap year until things straighten out in the world of college? Well, that was always an option for you, taking a gap year. So you can think about that. I want to say to you that the vast majority of students in general, and at BCC for sure, who defer or take a gap year, they go through the college application process. They choose a school that they want to go to. They deposit at that school and then they ask permission to take a gap year. And most students after a gap year, most do attend the school that they chose, not all, but most. And it's not impossible, but it's really harder to apply to a college when you're not in high school. Next slide. When talking about paying for college, it's important for families to be open about what's, what's affordable for a family. Some situations, we might be lucky, situations might not have changed. So the same options are on the table as were always on the table. For some families, maybe there've been some serious alterations of, of family finances. So that's something that families need to talk about. There's a thought that merit money might be a little tighter next year at colleges. And a reminder that the FAFSA opens on October 1st. It's down the road a little bit. But the big deal here is it's based on prior, prior year taxes. So that's 2019. So that's not when we had this impact. So financial aid offices are expecting a lot of requests for adjustments. And they also are very open and welcome to your calls. In fact, it's kind of odd, they actually say, you can call and ask us a question that's even if it's not about our college. There's a website called the FAFSA Forecaster, which lets you, prior to October 1st, go in and put in some data and kind of get kind of a sense of what your respective family contribution might be for college. It's a federal regulation that all schools must have a net price calculator. If it's not obvious, new in the search bar, type in net price calculator. That's another way for that school with their tuition and everything to figure out what your sticker price might be. Next slide. I'm almost done, you guys, I'm almost done. Let's review, here we go. You will get into college. I want you to stay plugged in. Please don't forget at my college and career website, please reach out for help. The College and Career Center position is a 12-month position, so that is staffed all summer long. Counselors work a good number of days over the summertime. Please reach out for help and stay engaged. Make it so that you're proud of how you use your time. When colleges ask how you use your time, have done something that you're proud of. Next slide. This is the last long quote, so, or a piece of advice. So there's a lot of information out there. When I put together this slideshow, I looked at my notes and I thought, I'm going to go get a ruler and see, measure my notes here. I had an inch and a half of notes. There's a lot of information out there. It can get overwhelming. So you're concerned about not having an internship, concerned about not having a part-time job. Maybe you could consider your college search, your internship or your part-time job. You know, actually schedule it into your day, an hour a day, a little bit more than that. You know, sit in your favorite chair, grab your water bottle, you know, attend a webinar or do this website trolling, do a Zoom chat, work on your essay. But give it 100% of yourself during that time and then walk away and do these other things that interest you. But come back the next day because it will all add up. Last slide, I think? So best wishes, stay safe and stay well. All the fun stuff from your class officers.
I'm trying to unmute myself. Hi, I'm Ms. Lloyd. I am your senior class sponsor. So I have a couple of the junior class officers on here with me as well. And they're going to talk right now about some of the stuff that we did this year. So I'm going to go ahead and unmute JD, your president. There you are, JD.
I'm unmuted. All right. Thank you, Ms. Lloyd. Good morning, everyone. My name is JD Gorman and I've had the pleasure of serving as your 2021 junior class president. I hope all are doing well and staying safe in the comfort of your homes. And I just wanted to say, despite the unforeseen end of the school year, it has been an incredible school year working for you all. Before I continue and say anything else, I would like to take a moment to thank our incredible college and career counselor, Mrs. Parmley. Mrs. Parmley will be retiring at the end of the year. And while we are sad to see her leave, we all know how hard she worked for us and what a well-deserved retirement this will be. I can't thank you enough for not only presenting me with so many opportunities, but for all the work that you have done with all the students at BCC. Mrs. Parmley, you have truly been a guiding light for us here at BCC. And we will miss you and your daily emails to start thinking about college. Thank you, Ms. Parmley. All right. Now onto our achievements throughout the school year. This year, we held numerous fundraisers, both within the school and out in our broader community. We were able to host the first school-sponsored corsage and boutonniere sales for the Homecoming Dance. Sell Homecoming T-shirts, hold bake sales events at the school, and have local restaurant fundraisers. All these fundraisers raise money for the prom and graduation we have coming in our senior year. However, the accomplishment I am most proud of is this year's winter charity dance. Thanks to the composure and maturity of our student body displayed at the Homecoming Dance, we were able to work with administration to bring winter dances back to BCC for the first time in a long time. Furthermore, this event raised money to benefit the Leukemia and Lymphoma, the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society as a part of a school-wide effort for February's Charity Month. Finally, I want to say that we will try to reschedule events such as the Senior Storm and any others that have been postponed due to the current global situation. As we finish up our junior year, we are eagerly looking toward the future and doing all that we can to give you the senior year that you've been looking forward to and the senior year that you deserve. Thank you.
Thank you so much, JD. Okay, so I want to give a couple of quick announcements, just in general, SGA things. First, we don't actually have SGA officers elected for next year. Those elections are still coming. We'll have our elections for each class and then also our school-wide elections. So if you're interested in running, start thinking about it. And you'll be getting emails from Ms. Trimble in your school email with that information in the next couple of weeks. So keep an eye out for that. And then I just want to go through some of the ways that you can keep in contact with SGA, especially now since we can't give you announcements through the school building. So please make sure that you're checking your school email a lot. You should be doing it anyway, but check it all the time. We also just started a 2021 Google Classroom. I'm going to put the code on here. It will also be in the list of links that you'll get via email later today or this week, hopefully this week. So please make sure that you join that. You can follow us on Instagram. You can also enroll in Baron Blast Text Reminders. And then you can always just email me or contact one of your current SGA reps if you have questions. So I'm going to leave this slide up for like another two seconds. If you want to take a picture of it, go ahead. If not, like we said, this meeting is being recorded. You'll be able to access it later. And this Google Classroom code will come out with all of the links that we're going to send you from today's presentation. Okay? So all good places to check. Okay. This is a response to a question that has been asked by several different people. Your junior awards ceremony is going to be this Thursday, so tomorrow, at 6:30 PM. And it's going to be broadcast on YouTube and you'll get a link to the YouTube video. Individual students and their families who are being recognized were notified over email yesterday. And if you did get an award, it is being mailed to your house. And if you want to watch the awards ceremony, it's Thursday at 6:30. Or if you want to watch the senior awards, it's going to be the same day, Thursday, 28th, at 7:30. Okay? Congratulations if you got an award. Okay, a lot of people have also been asking about SSL opportunities. We're not sure right now how SSL hours are, you know, being handled for your graduating class. If the requirements are still the same, it's not been clear. But if you want to use this time to work on some SSL hours, that's a great idea. If you're bored at home, give back to your community. We've linked this website, Montgomery Serves. There are some virtual opportunities that you can do from your house and then get SSL hours for. So great use of your time. Try to get some of those done now slash this summer. All the forms from this school year, including all your forms from last summer, are due to Ms. Henry by Friday, June 5th, so next Friday. Her email is right here. It's also on the counseling website. So she's our SSL coordinator. Contact her with all your SSL hour questions. Okay, right now I'm going to pass it over to Antonia, who's our vice president. And she's going to talk about the most fun part, which is our senior shirts.
Great, thank you, Ms. Lloyd. So as JD so perfectly said, I hope everyone is staying safe. And thank you, Ms. Parmally, for guiding us through the college process. But yeah, so these are, this is the final part that the SGA is presenting. These are shirts, all the final designs, the jerseys for the girls and the boys and the senior girl shirt. And these are, just to emphasize, these are completely optional for everyone. Like you're not obligated to buy these. But if you do want to buy them, orders have to be complete by June 5th. And you can pay via Venmo or drop off cash or check at the designated locations in the Google Forms that will be sent out in the email that Ms. Lloyd mentioned. And also look out for information about socially distant pickup. It'll be later during the summer probably. And the girls are 100% welcome to join the Facebook group, the BCC Girls Class of 2021 Facebook group for notifications and updates and whatever. And yeah, I'm just really excited to safely reunite again next year and for a great senior year.
Thanks, Antonia. I think that's it from SGA, Doug.
Yeah, thank you very much to the officers. Ms. Lloyd, thank you so much for being a part of our presentation. I have the final slides that we're going to conclude our presentation today. Just a reminder of individuals to contact at the school, reach out. We are here to support you. Just because we're physically not walking in that building doesn't mean that we aren't here to help you with questions, emails. Find a way to be in touch with us. So of course, here's a list, a couple that I want to point out. I know some of you took AP exams. Ms. Young is our AP coordinator. This judge about the yearbook. Of course, Ms. Parmally, she's with us till July 1st. Ms. Bonner, a few questions about your transcript. Ms. Teicher works with Ms. Levitsky. And so any questions about money or what, what is, oh, those questions can go there. I am a point of contact for anything. So I certainly have the ability to forward any of those questions that you may have to someone else to get a question answered for you. So please do not hesitate to send something my way and I will be sure to get it out to someone that can get you an answer. Next slide. So counselors for 11th grade, I'm sure that many of you are very familiar with who your counselor is. This is just a quick reminder because what I'm going to talk about on the next slide is there is a task for you over the summer and I think it's a, it's a critical one. And so I just want to remind you, your counselors are here. They are able to support, again, just as I said, for whatever you may need, reach out to them. But on the next slide, Ms. Lloyd. If you would like to reach out for specific information, I want you to know that the Counseling Services Department has established a Google Sites. And it is here because we kind of need a place to go to access a lot of information. So Counseling Services is here for a number of reasons. To support you with your courses for next year. They are there to help you if you're just uneasy about something. Reach out if you know that you have a friend who's really struggling and we are here to help you in many regards. That Google Sites is designed to take you to those different areas in which Counseling Services is here to serve you and help you. So please know that that site is there. It can be accessed under the counseling tab of the BCC website. So please know that that is available to you. Also coming out very, very soon, really in early June, there will be a message that goes out to the entire junior class. And it will be to recommend that you schedule a college conversation with your counselor. So what we know we don't have anymore is the availability of the counseling office to just be open during lunch or before and after school. If you just stop by and get those questions answered, to talk about your current transcript. What are your goals? What are you looking forward or where do you want to go into next year? So counselors will be scheduling with students to hold virtual conversations and they will be sending out how it is they would like to schedule with you if you want to participate in that conversation. So please keep your eye out for an email about that. Next slide. So one question we were asked more than any other when we heard from students is, please tell us about next year. And the truth is, we do not have that answer yet. The simple answer is please stay tuned. It is absolutely something that is being worked on. And when we know it is at that point that we can communicate it to you, we will send it your way. I wish that I had that answer and I will say this to you directly. That is my number one question as well. I very much want to know what next year is like for you, what it's like for me, what it's like for all of us. Because school was a big part of my life. It is something that I look forward to. And to not be in that building, it is a question that I have. So as soon as I know, I will try to get you that information. So you are aware as well. And our final slide, so that brings us to the end of our presentation today. Thank you again for everyone who presented. I would also just like to say to Patty, thank you so much for guiding the College and Career Office for all of these years. Everyone knows your work. They feel your work. They see the result of your work. That is powerful alone, but I think you did it in a way that was very authentic. And I think that you showed that BCC was your home away from home. So thank you for giving your authentic self. I think it made a big difference. It made a big, big difference for kids. And I think that that is why we do this work, is that we want to make a difference for kids and their families. So thank you very much. Have a wonderful, we ended right at 11 o'clock. So have a wonderful morning. Hope you guys engage with your classes this afternoon and reach out to us if you need anything. We really, really miss you.
Miss you. Bye, stay well, bye.